Welcome to the Falls Township Board of Supervisors meeting Wednesday, February 23rd. We'll begin with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Tekeeta, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Boraski.
Here.
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 All right, and for the record, Mr. Galloway has a prior engagement, as does Mr. Palmer. So item number one on our agenda is public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment?
No public comment.
No public comment. All right. Item number two, certificate of appropriateness, 16 Yardley Avenue. Construction of a second-story addition. This is pretty straightforward. Any questions or comments for Mr. Tekeeta from board members?
No questions.
No.
This was unanimously approved by the hardboard.
We had someone in on Zoom.
Okay. Um, Mr. Posey's the homeowner, correct?
No, I am the contractor.
Oh, that's going to do the work.
Correct.
Okay. Is there, there any public comment needed?
Excuse me?
I'm talking to the, on my end.
Gotcha.
Uh, stand by, we have one coming in. Tony's in for public comment.
All right, your public comment for this certificate of appropriateness, Tony?
No, I had public comment for the whole meeting.
Okay, let me finish this and then we'll come back to you.
That's fine, thanks.
Okay, so there's no public comment. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. All right. Thank you, Mr. Posey.
Hey, thank you very much. Have a great evening. Thank you.
All right, so I'll go back to public comment, Mike?
If you would like, yes.
Yeah. All right, go ahead, Tony.
I am.
Okay. Um, waste management has applied for a major permit modification for the Fairless landfill.
Yeah.
The eastern expansion, and it's for a lateral and vertical expansion for approximately 64 acres. And it will increase the permitted net airspace by approximately 24.8 million cubic yards, adding an estimated four to five years of additional disposal life. Now, my questions about this are, one, is this new area zone for waste disposal?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, what actions will be taken to reduce the methane that will be generated? Uh, because currently, the electric plant that was there is no longer operational, I believe it was closed. And currently, the methane is being burned off by flares.
Correct.
And this, of course, causes air pollution. And will they require more flares on all this additional land? Or are they actually going to do something about the methane to, or some other alternative, whether it's build another electric plant?
There was talk of building another electric plant. Uh, I'm not sure how they plan on this. This is a good six years away, this project, and um, we really don't regulate this, correct, Mr. Clark?
Uh, we do not.
This is regulated by the DEP.
That's correct.
Okay, but since they are doing it in Falls Township, we should have some say. And I think there should be something in, in our agreement with them that actually reserves space for our sole use for when the landfill does close, that some space is still available for us to use. And perhaps this could be done by a rental contract so that they maintain it and we don't actually have the responsibility of cleaning up after it. Uh, but there should be some benefits to, you know, for our use besides the tipping fees. Because not only, uh, are they obviously polluting the air with all this, but there's also the smells for the people who live close to it, the added trash that's all over the railways, uh, roadways from the trucks, and the damage to our roads from all the heavy trash trucks and their stopping and starting continuously.
Well, there's very little on our roads.
You should be getting something out of this besides tipping fees.
You know, the tipping and hosting fees are what we get out of it. Everything in the agreement is from 2000 and what, Mike?
Uh.
2002?
We did a modification either 2003, 2004.
Yeah, it was long before I was here.
Yeah.
So, you know, they don't really, you know, unless they're collecting our trash, they're not on township roads. They're limited on what roads they can go on. I'm not saying that they don't drive on any township roads, but there's not.
The trucks are on our roads. I mean, they come and stop at my house.
Yeah, well, they're trash trucks. They're coming no matter what, whether, no matter what landfill they're going to. Um, I don't know what is in the agreement with regards to when it's closed, what we can do with the land.
The agreement which was negotiated in, again, 2003, 2004, uh, does have some after closure provisions. Uh, we are limited in what can be used on the property. But more importantly, when we negotiated that agreement back in 2003, 2004, we did not negotiate it with the local waste management. We wouldn't, uh, we negotiated it with, um, the, um, Waste Management International, um, so that any issues that may come up five years after it's closed, 20 years after it's closed, as long as waste management is in business, there'll be somebody who will be responsible for the maintenance of the landfills.
Right. Again, we really, you know, we don't get to tell them, yes, you can and can't do this. It's not our jurisdiction.
But Jeff, I think in granting them the use of this land, we should maybe ask for some additional perks. I mean, we're telling the guy who wants to buy the, who is buying the land behind Edgemont that he has certain stipulations that we're going to hold him to, and that's not normal on a lot of things. So what's to stop us from making stipulations on waste management?
There's nothing, but my point is, we're not granting them the use of the land. We have no say in it. I mean, it's zoned and it's their land. They can, you know, they are approved by the DEP and regulated by the DEP. They had to clean up the site for the DEP so they could turn it into a landfill. And we don't get to tell them, no, you can and can't do it, is my point.
Well, just saying we could ask for perks. I don't think it would hurt.
Well, you know, they do plenty for Falls Township.
Okay, that's all I had.
That's it for tonight?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else for public comment?
No public, no public comment.
All right. Item number three, North Point Falls Township Industrial LLC, preliminary and final land development, phase two, buildings four, five, and six. Mr. Toadvine.
Good evening. Uh, yes, I'm here for the applicant tonight. This is actually phase two of the project. We're here on tax parcel number 1351001. Buildings four, five, and six, those three buildings, uh, all will exceed 1 million square feet in size. As part of the application, we're requesting nine waivers, which I believe justification for has been submitted previously. Uh, the, your solicitors prepared a resolution which my client's reviewed, approved, and executed. Uh, I have Mr. Clase and, uh, I believe.
Casey and Kennedy.
Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy online in case there's any questions of our engineers. And also, Mr. Michael here from North Point, if you have any questions.
Okay. Uh, this is pretty straightforward, right, Mr. Clark?
The waivers are basically the same as we asked for.
Mr. Jones, do you have anything to add? Any comments, concerns, or questions?
No, Mr. Chairman, I do not at this time.
How about board members? Anything from you, Mr. Boraski?
No, nothing.
Ms. Mullin?
No.
Right, and this is straightforward, you know, and a lot of these waivers are going to be addressed when they do the final development down there. Um, what resolution is this? This is 2022-6?
Correct.
And that's going to take out all four of them, our four of these buildings, three of these buildings. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
All right. Item number four, we declared a snow emergency back on, uh, the 28th of January. We have to ratify that, correct? Pretty straightforward again.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
No? Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. All right, we're going to revisit the bids for the sale of the township surplus vehicles, item five. There's two vehicles and trucks that we had to relist on municipal bid. The first one's a 2005 Tahoe. The municipal bid winning bid is 575 and the appraised value range is 7 to 900. The second vehicle is a 2006 F-150, which was offered to the next highest bidder on municipal bid. That bid is $2,700. The appraised value is $2,500 to $2,800.
Mr. Dent, there's one additional vehicle.
Yeah.
Uh, it is a 2011 Crown Vic. The winning bid was $2,888 and the appraised value range is $1,600 to $1,800.
Wow. You did pretty good on this one.
Yes.
Any, um, questions or comments from board members?
No.
No questions.
All right. Is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion to approve the sale of the vehicles?
Several.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right. Item number six, purchase vehicles for the Public Works Department. Again, we're going to revisit this. Do you want to take us through this one, Mr. Tekeeta?
Yes, uh, back in, uh, during budget season for the 2022 budget, uh, we budgeted for four, two, 2022 international large dump trucks with upfits. When the, uh, budget process began, we estimated the trucks to cost $180,000. Uh, when the, the trucks came in, the actual quotes were increased to $194,277 each, which is $14,277 over budget, the cost of each truck. Um, what we would like to do is use the revenues we received from the decommissioned vehicles, uh, sold on a municipal bid, the amount of $5,000 to offset the shortage of funds. Uh, and the vendor, U.S. Municipal Supply, has offered a deferred payment of $52,108 um, until 2023 for the cost of the four snowplow outfits. Um, so we wanted to bring this to the board's attention, uh, because it is, it does exceed the budgeted amount.
And these vehicles won't be ready till 2023 anyway, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Possibly.
Yeah, possibly, or the very, very late, uh, late part of, uh, 2022.
Okay.
We're paying for the vehicles there, right? I think we're just, they're going to hold the,
We are.
Payments for the plow attachments, right?
Correct, yeah, they'll, they'll deliver the, uh, the plows and the trucks. And we're just going to withhold, they're going to, they'll hold off on us paying until 2023.
Awesome.
Okay, any other questions from board members?
No.
Any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, so what's the dollar amount now? The additional amount? We already approved this once, right?
Correct. The total amount, uh, is $194,277 per vehicle. And we are ordering, uh, four, uh, four vehicles.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Several.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Tekeeta, can you poll the board?
Yes. Mr. Boraski?
Yes.
Mr. Dent?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
All right. Item seven, consider 2022 fee schedule for code, fire, and park and rec. This is another resolution?
Correct.
Mr. Dent, this is a comprehensive revision of the township's fee schedule. We do this on an annual basis to make sure that all the, the fees in the township are up to date. Uh, Mr. Tekeeta and his staff have reviewed all the fees and find them to be acceptable. We provided a memo outlining all of the various changes. Um, most of the major changes are in the park and rec section. Uh, there was a Pinewood pool fee overhaul, and the fee is now based on the amount of, the number of family members rather than the, uh, number of individuals in a household. And we've also suspended the memorial bench program and, for 2022 while we continue to replace benches in the park.
All right. Any questions or comments from board members? Mr. Boraski?
No.
Ms. Mullin?
Uh, maybe, one second. Sorry, can you just, what's the difference in the pool fees? What's the difference between family members and household members? So I believe that there was a concern that, um, applications were being made for, um, potential, uh, people that were being babysat and things like that, that weren't necessarily a family member. Um, so this would limit it to family members. For a family membership.
Okay, thank you.
Any, um, public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right. Is there a motion, resolution number 2022-7?
Make the motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Item number eight, consider proposal for construction management professional services for the municipal building, municipal building renovation project. All right, so we have a design to renovate this building, which is, you know, a few years back, we designed a new building we were going to build, and it took us probably almost two years to design it. And by the time we designed it, the cost was so high, we kind of walked off and went away from that project. Um, we have a new design to renovate this building, you know, and make it more suitable to a, an office environment. I mean, if you ever have gone over to the code department, it's, um, a tough place to work. It's one big giant open room, you know? If you go over to our police department, it's like peeing in a habit trail. You feel like a, a hamster or something. There's, you know, you could, if they walked you in there and you didn't leave a trail, you probably wouldn't find yourself out, am I right, Chief Whitney? Um, you know, the upstairs was leased space at one time, you know? We did some renovations to the manager's office, but I think there's been a lot of patchwork over the years and never a true, like, design of a municipal building here. So we came up with the idea to renovate this building. We have a design and we have a construction management company. Mr. Boraski and Ms. Mullin both were on the committee that interviewed several companies. And we have, uh, centered on Grace Construction. Anything to add to that, Mr. Boraski?
Um, no, I mean, that sums up where, where, what led us to today. We, um, we do have, um, representatives from Grace Construction. Um, I'd just like to see if the guys could, don't mind, like, kind of telling anybody might be watching and, and everybody in this room, like, where, you know, what our, what our next steps are going to be and, you know, what our, you know, what our goals are and, you know, what you guys are going to do to help us out. But you can come up if you want.
Hi, good evening. Uh, my name is Steve Agonrau. I'm the Director of Business Development with Grace Construction, and, uh, we're here to, uh, to help out with the project. Um, consulting services for construction management from the design build phase through the construction to the closeout. Uh, there are some preliminary sketches that were provided to us. And we'd like to reach out to architectural services as well as civil services, uh, to create the design, uh, work through the pricing, estimating, ultimately oversee the construction as well as the closeout documents.
Um, so, so overall, I mean, just, I know, you know, just other supervisors didn't, you know, weren't a part of it, but overall, our, our timeframe, um, can you just kind of go through, um, briefly, like, you know, from now out, you know, 12, 18, 20 months, you know? Like, what's kind of like our, you know, when maybe bids and when construct, we could maybe anticipate some construction, sorry?
Well, if we look into the process itself, as a design and pre-construction, we're looking about eight months. Uh, collectively as well, we work and try to go through, uh, the process of approvals as well, uh, which is 10 months. So we're looking at, uh, a closeout as well at the end. So we're looking at, if you add all that up collectively, if I had to guess, we would be, uh, you know, completed the project within 20 to 22 months, start to finish.
And I know, um, not a question, but more of a statement of what, what led us here today is, you know, is, you know, obviously, you know, the board of supervisors are, are volunteers and, um, and, you know, the township employees have their tasks to do. So in all reality, you know, we need a company that can help us, for lack of better terms, put our, you know, feet in front of each other and, and kind of get, make this happen, you know? We just, we just can't continue to, you know, we can't, we can't, like, we can't do that work. So really, while you guys are here, and we're looking forward to working with you guys.
The construction management services are here. We're, we're here to help you out and, and, and make it a seamless project, um, as well as transparent. So we're here to help you out. Uh, we're, we're the eyes and ears, uh, for the township. That's the way we look at it, and we're here to make the place better. Um, certainly, I think the renovation is due. Uh, based upon our research, uh, the building has had several different uses over the years. Um, we're here to help out with efficiencies. We're here to help out with, uh, energy savings as well and just make it a better building. Um, that's, that's the goal at the end of the day. We have, uh, we'll have a dedicated project manager, an estimating staff, a construction superintendent, and, uh, a full team here to make that happen, uh, all the way from the start to finish.
All right.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Tekeeta? Mr. Clark?
No.
Mr. Jones, is he still with us?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do not have any questions.
All right. These guys were both on the
Yeah.
Committee, so, and I have none. Um, I'm familiar with Grace Construction. So with that, I guess I'll ask for a motion, correct, Mr. Clark?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Um, I'll make the motion to, I guess we'll approve the proposal for construction management professional services for the municipal building, uh, for Grace Construction.
I'll second.
Motion, motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I didn't, I didn't take public comment. Is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, good. All right.
Joe's on, do you want to introduce himself, or he was on?
Yeah, I'm Joe Barbour, I'm the President's CEO. Unfortunately, I'm out of town, but, uh, I've heard everything and Steve's kept me abreast of everything. So we look forward to obviously working with the, uh, the township. And, um, you know, we do a lot of work in this area and, and this type of construction. So we're very, uh, much looking forward to being part of the team and, uh, making this project happen for the township. I think it's, there's going to be a wow factor on the final delivery, and I think, uh, it's something that's been long overdue. I, I live just up the street in, uh, in, uh, in Yardley, uh, since 1987. So, um, you know, three or four miles from the township, so I know it real well right there on Lincoln Highway. So, um, been in the area for a long time. So looking forward to, uh, to accommodating what you guys are looking to do there and working with, uh, your team.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, item number nine, consider authorization for advertisement for landscape services at township facilities for years 2022, 23, and 24. This is pretty straightforward. We've had the same landscaper for quite a while now, and we're just advertising, right, Ms. Gallagher? So is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, Matt, real quick, are the, I guess the bid specs for the, for this will be, if, well, this is just for advertising, so we'll advertise and then the bid specs become available?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah.
So we'll see this two more times, or?
See it, uh, just one more time.
Just to approve the?
Correct.
Just to approve, yep.
Yeah, everybody, go ahead.
All right, item 10, consider adopting ordinance chapter 74, amending the non-uniform pension plan administered by the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System pursuant to Article Four of the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement Law. Ms. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. Dent. This is a pretty straightforward amendment to the township's, um, pension ordinance. It will establish a disability benefit for all eligible employees under the PMRS system. There is no cost to the township for this, and this is just, um, additional benefit that the township can offer to its PMRS eligible employees.
All right. Again, this is pretty straightforward stuff. Is there any questions from board members?
No.
No.
Ms. Mullin? I apologize again. Uh, is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right, is there a motion?
Several.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And this is ordinance number 22, uh, 2022-1.
Correct. Item 11, consider stipulation to settle in appeal of, I don't know what that word is.
I think it's a group of initials, A R E P 2 B C Industrial LLC.
Is this a school board thing?
Um, this is a tax assessment appeal,
Okay.
which the school board has, uh, determined they wish to settle, and we have to authorize the settlement. Uh, again, it's for, uh, A R E P 2 B C Industrial LLC, uh, for a property located at 3,000 Cabot Boulevard. Uh, the property owner, uh, appealed its assessment, and the board of assessment reduced the property's assessment from 323,640,000 dollars to 278, uh, and 20 dollars. The taxpayer filed an appeal. Uh, the school district has reached a settlement, uh, with the, uh, property owner effective January 1st, 2021, uh, for municipal and county taxes. Uh, the assessment will be reduced from 278,020 dollars to 240,300 dollars and effective January 1st, 2022. And moving forward, it shall be reduced from 278,020 dollars to 215 dollars and eight, 215,800 dollars. Uh, if the board is to agree to this stipulation, we will need to, uh, refund the taxpayer for tax year 2021 an amount of 272 dollars and 34 cents. This, I believe, has already been approved by the county and by the school district. So we would just need a motion to approve the settlement.
272 dollars and 34 cents?
Yes.
Wonder what this costs us in legal fees to do?
Well, it costs us very little because the school district takes the laboring more on this. But this was a taxpayer-initiated settlement.
Okay. Is there any questions from board members?
No.
No.
Is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Item number 12, we're going to table. Is there a motion to table?
Make the motion to table.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Item 13, consider purchase of body, of body cameras for the police department. I apologize, I forgot my glasses tonight, so I'm trying my best to read. So I mumble, because I'm just reading what I see. So this is pretty straightforward as well. This is going to bring us up into, you know, the modern day body camera that most police departments have, correct, Chief Whitney?
It will, Mr. Chairman. This is, uh, technology that complements the in-car cameras that we've been building out, and this will bring us current with technology in law enforcement.
Okay, and what's the total cost of this here? This is 254,785 dollars, correct?
Uh, the total cost for the five-year contract is 166,620 dollars. They, they broke it up
Oh, I see.
with an initial payment and then a total cost. It's up to us how we really pay it. They can even break it up into a monthly cost, but it, um, it provides several advantages over the other model they offered. They've given us credits back, uh, for some equipment and a program that really didn't work out with them. So they refunded. with them, so they refunded us eight thousand dollars for a prior program that we tried with them. And it's a complete equipment refresh at the three-year mark, which is very appealing. So we'll literally get all new ca, body cameras and batteries at the three-year mark.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Chief Whitney? Ms. Borowski?
I had a question, I don't know if it came up, or, I know we discussed it a little bit, but was there a reason why there's, is there one for every officer?
Yes.
Any reason why? Like, I was just wondering, like, I was kind of looking at like a portable radio, is it any different? Like, they don't, all take their radios home, right?
Actually, we do.
Okay.
We have our own radios. And the body cameras, the reason that they're assigned to an officer rather than a car, like an in-car camera, is because each camera is identified to that officer for evidence purposes. So anything recorded on that camera is linked with that officer, and...
So it's not something, just take the card out and?
Correct.
Change the card?
Correct, yeah. When it's uploaded into the server where it can't be changed, it's linked to that officer.
Oh, okay. All right.
Is it?
Yeah, that was all, I was just really just curious why we weren't, you know, kind of interchanging, you know, from whoever's coming on shift, you know, maybe assign it with the car, you know, but makes sense.
Ms. Mullin?
Yeah, I just was wondering, if we approve this, when would we see the actual body cameras? And would it be a rollout, or everybody's getting them, and we're going to all be body-canned on such-and-such date?
That's correct. And it would take, according to watch guard, it would take approximately ninety days to deliver the product once we place the order.
Deliver the product, install the product, get everything up and, like, don't have...
Installation here on site, training, and the policy's very simple to promulgate. Everybody around us has these, so it's, it's not hard to steal a policy from a neighboring township and implement it here.
Right.
Right. Clark does that all the time, right, Mike?
And we already, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I said, thank you.
And we already have some officers using them?
No, we don't currently have any body cameras. We do have in-car cameras out in the fleet. With this purchase, we'll have in-car cameras in every patrol vehicle, and every officer will have a body camera.
Okay. And there was no, no path issues at all with the body cameras or anything?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. So the total amount is one sixty-six, six hundred and twenty?
That's correct.
All right. Is there any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right. Is there a motion?
Make the motion over the purchase.
Second.
No, we have to do a voice vote. Mr. Tekeeta, can you poll the board?
Yes, Mr. Borowski.
Yes.
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 All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Item fourteen, consider resolution for the sewage facilities planning module for K.A. at Fairless LP. Whose is this?
Could be Mr. Jones, or could be me. This is a pretty standard form and resolution that needs to be adopted and sent to the Department of Environmental Protection when a new facility is proposed that will alter our Act Five, that is not necessarily included in our Act Five Thirty-Seven Plan. So K.A. at Fairless is the new Wawa, and since they will be adding additional sewage to the system, the EP needs to approve it. So this is the resolution where we approve the sewer planning module. I get that right, Mr. Jones?
I can say it better, Mr. Clark. Perfect.
Any questions for Mr. Jones or Mr. Clark?
No questions.
No.
Any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash eight?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consider, item number fifteen, consider escrow release requests.
There are two escrow release requests before you tonight. One is for Tavo Properties LP at Two Canal Road in the amount of three hundred and ninety-three thousand, five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-two cents. And another one for Alros Steel Corporation at Seventeen Progress Drive, in the amount of three million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars and five cents. Jones Engineering Associates has reviewed these release requests, and they are completed to their satisfaction.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Jones or Mr. Tekeeta?
No questions.
No.
All right. I have none. Is there a motion to approve, we can do both of these at once, right? To approve these two escrow releases?
No public comment.
Thank you.
I'll make, you want to make a motion?
Sure.
Make a motion to approve both escrow releases.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Tekeeta, can you poll the board?
Mr. Borowski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
All right. Consider donation requests for various organizations. Every year we do this, six thousand dollars, we do the American Legion for their Memorial Day Parade. You know, that's something new this year, the parades are coming back. It seems like it's been, you know, we lost so much time of our lives, it seems like it's been years since we've had a St. Patrick's Day Parade or a Memorial Day Parade. Six thousand dollars for Levittown Continental, six thousand dollars for Fairless Hills Athletic Association, six thousand dollars for the Falls Soccer Club, Levittown American Baseball Club, six thousand dollars for Historic Falsington, for Falsington Day, six thousand dollars for the Bucks County St. Patrick's Day Parade. And we have, oh, a donation for Townships Against Graffiti, correct? Is that what that says?
Yes.
Okay. And we're ratifying, we already gave the St. Patrick's Day Parade the money, right? So we're ratifying that.
Correct.
And we can do all this at once? Ms. Gallagher?
Yes, we can do all of us.
All right. Any comments or questions?
No.
No, I love when we do this. I do.
Any, any public comment needed?
No public comment.
All right. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve donation requests for various organizations.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Appointments to various boards of commissions. This writing is so small, there's no way I can see it. I mean, we've covered most of these.
Yes, these are the only vacancies.
All right. Does anyone want to make a motion to anything?
I just had that one for the official board.
Okay. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Robert Matic to the, we have one opening on the Historical Architectural Board for Registered Architect or Qualified Building Contractor.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, second.
Motion made and seconded?
Did you say who it was? I'm sorry.
Yeah, Robert Matic.
Robert Matic, yes, second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. We will revisit this. Do you have any?
And, just a question. We did have someone resign from the Planning Commission. We had an alternate that we had just appointed, same off. As a board, do we have to take any action to make that alternate a full member of the Planning Commission?
Yes, you need to appoint the alternate as, to fulfill, to fill the unexpired term.
Fulfill the remainder of the...
And then you would need to appoint a new alternate.
Okay. I'll make the motion at that time, you're all right?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
All right. I'll also make a motion to move our alternate, which is also Robert Matic, to, to fulfill the remainder of the Planning Commission spot vacated by Mr. Crowe.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? None. Any more? No?
No.
Okay.
Revisit.
Yes. Item eighteen, consider proposal from Mr., oh, IMR, oh goodness, IMR Digital for scanning. It's not funny. You want to explain this one?
The board is being asked to consider approving...
Mr. Digital, I'm listening.
A proposal for a bulk scanning project that would include approximately seven hundred and twenty thousand images, most of these being in the code department and Fire Marshal's office as part of our bulk scanning, bulk scanning project. These will all be downloaded into DocuWare, which is our digital document management system. The total cost of this proposal is eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars. This was a budgeted item.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Tekeeta or comments?
No.
How far back do the records go that we're scanning?
Eighteen seventies?
Back as far as the, the records go in the, in the paper files.
So there's things from back then that only exist in paper?
Correct.
Quite a few, right?
Yes.
There's a lot.
This will, and the, the process will meet the archiving requirements, so once they're digitized, we, we will be able to destroy certain documents.
That's great. Thank you.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the total of eighty-six thousand, four hundred dollars from IMR Digital?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Tekeeta, can you poll the board? Is there any public comment needed before we vote?
No public comment.
Mr. Borowski?
Yes.
Mr. Dents?
Yes.
Ms. Mullin?
Yes.
Item nineteen, minutes from January seventeen. Any corrections needed? Comments?
No.
No, excellent minutes, as always, Mrs. Poole. And I know at some point she's going to be watching this meeting, she's not with us tonight.
Make a motion?
Yep.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Item twenty, Mr. Jones, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. This month's report, or the, the report for the month of January indicates that we had two new land developments submitted. One of them is for the Morrisville Municipal Authority Waste Water Treatment Plant down at the KTC, that's a minor building addition for their purposes. And the other one is the HiOsen Incorporated, that's a site that we all know, down in the same area, and they proposed a building addition as well. We have four new earth disturbance applications submitted, and two new cell tower alteration applications submitted. As usual, the highlights are in red in the body of the report, I'll touch on a few. The MLH Exploration Project, that is the medical marijuana plant down in the KTC, and they are beginning construction on the greenhouse. My understanding is that it's all site work that's being done and demolition, nothing verticals occurred yet. The next four in the grouping, MM Metals, JG Bertucci, and Alros Steel are all substantially complete, with K.A. at Fairless Hills, we spoke about that tonight, that is actually now under construction. The safety, perimeter safety fence has been installed, some demo works happening, and some milling. So just the starting phases of the Wawa. Lincoln Storage is underway, that project is, is in a bit of a delay due to their significant retaining walls. They recently submitted shop drawings to us for our review, and we're not going to allow them to, to do any heavy excavation or bulk excavation until we approve the retaining wall design. But that should happen within the next few days, and it'll be back operational again. North Point Phase One, Building Three, is under construction, that consists primarily of storm sewers and storm water management facilities. The Raising Canes Project, we've had a preconstruction meeting for that, so that's also under construction with safety fencing and limited demolition work. Levittown Car Wash, I think we remember this project, it was approved by this board, but since then, they've realized that they had to make a couple of changes to their building dimensions, which triggered another zoning variance. I believe they've been to the zoning hearing board, and that will come back as an amended final plan, buried shortly. The Mission Barbecue is under my law review, so that project will be started fairly quickly. And then the last item in red is the Waste Water Treatment Plant, that's under review and will likely be before the Planning Commission next month, as well as the HiOsen land development. The earth disturbances have been pretty quiet, not much to update, the four new ones that were submitted, two of them were approved and two of them are still under review. The residential projects were the ones that were approved, and the two commercial projects, and that MMA Waste Water Treatment Plant, that's a different, that's not the building, related to the building under the land development, that's just some concrete pad. So those two are still under review. And we haven't had, we don't have much to report on the capital projects since we had a pretty cold month, and there wasn't much activity, zero on the road programs. However, this office is continuing to work on the design of Willow, that's the schedule for construction, not this year but next year, and we're moving the Rice Drive culvert along and expect to be back for authorization to advertise either next month or the month after. But on target for construction in the summer, when it makes sense to, to do that type of project, because the, the base flows in the stream will be low. So that's my report, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Jones?
No questions.
No questions.
No questions. Okay. I have none. Is there a motion to accept the engineer's report?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right.
Thanks, Joe.
That takes us to the bill list. We have a bill list in the amount of three million, sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-one dollars. About 1.5 of that is payroll, some other highlights in there. Any questions or comments on the bill list?
No questions.
No.
Any public comment needed?
No public comment.
Is there a motion to pay the bills?
Make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Tekeeta, can you poll the board?
Yes.
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 All right. That takes us to the twenty twenty, am I, am I out of order here? Executive session, Mr. Clark, do you want to comment on our executive session?
Yes, the board held an executive session on February ninth of this year to discuss contract negotiations, and the board held an executive session earlier this evening to discuss contract negotiations, personnel, potential litigation, and litigation.
All right, thank you. Takes us to the police, police department report. Chief Whitney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In January, the police department handled one thousand, five hundred and twenty-three calls for service. Among them were five overdoses and one hundred and six vehicle crashes. I'll just hit the highlights here, you have my report. On January twenty-sixth, we had an aggravated assault in North Park where a man was shot in the leg with an arrow after a dispute. An arrest was made in that case. And just earlier, on February 16th, we had a fatal car crash on Lincoln Highway at the Garden Center. We ran a Super Bowl DUI roving patrol that led to an arrest this year. The detail was funded by a grant from the PennDOT Aggressive Driving Wave Program. We had two more additions to our memorial markers program. Two families came, applied to us, and we installed memorial markers to honor their loved ones that were lost in car crashes in the township. The Haas alerts are underway. We have currently seven vehicles outfitted with them. We're doing about two a week. We conducted training for different officers in the department. We had officers certified as defensive tactics instructors. We had officers sent to cyber crimes investigations. We conducted department-wide range training where state qualifications were held. We hosted a street cop training class at the Sheraton that we sent officers to. We sent some of our SWAT team members to close quarters battle training, and we sent some of our supervisors to a first-line supervision school. We also received Delaware Valley Trust Risk Management Innovation Award as a police department for our use of the blueprint system and the Haas alert in our patrol fleet. They gave us a $1,000 award, which we're going to apply to the purchase of high-visibility vests for use by our officers to keep them safe on roadways. They're gonna give us a plaque and a luncheon. And then just an FYI, the Pensbury School District has contracted with a company called Bus Patrol to outfit their fleet of buses with video cameras that will issue electronic citations, similar to the kind of citations you get when you go through a work zone, for school bus violations. So, it's not up and running yet, but it's in the latter part of the planning stages. We're not really involved in it, other than we're gonna review the citations, and I think the township gets $25 for each citation that's issued. But that's, you know, in the works, and I would expect that to be operational this year. And the last thing I had was just a reminder for people to drive safely. Nationwide, reckless driving is up. It's not unique to Falls Township, but it's certainly present here. People still aren't driving very well, so for anybody that's listening at home, please try to be calm and respectful of other drivers. And, you know, it's a tragedy to lose a life in a car crash. It's just needless. And that's my report to the board for tonight.
Thank you, Chief Whitney. Any questions or comments?
Chief, can you just go back to the thing you were saying about the buses?
Yes.
The ticket will be automatically generated?
It's electronically generated. It's sent to us for review after we approve it. We have a designated officer to, to review and approve it. Then it, then it gets filed.
And then, and then the township gets, how much out of the ticket?
I believe the township gets 25. I think Pensbury gets 25, and the rest goes to the vendor.
All right. I'd like to maybe see how this thing progresses, and we could talk more as a board and the manager's office about, you know, using that 25 or giving it back to the school issue to keep continuing to, you know, for the safety to move forward, safety for the, for the children, you know. Going blank on the other thing I was gonna ask you. Come back to me. I'll thank you.
Any questions?
I do. Thank you. Do we no longer do the DARE program in any of the schools? And if so, was that a COVID thing?
Well, the DARE program was phased out by Pensbury. They replaced it with a program called STEPS, and-
Oh, STEPS, yes.
We had some officers teaching STEPS. We've, we've had retirements of people that were trained, particularly Officer Jaeger was, was very involved in that program. And between COVID and just losing trained personnel, we have not continued involvement in it.
So, that was our, the school didn't do that? We just haven't had anyone to do it, or available to train it?
For STEPS, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, you mentioned the Memorial Marker, which is a great program, and I don't think anyone else, even in Pennsylvania, does this. I mean, I think you found out of it when a family from Florida, isn't that correct, when their son was killed up here and reached out to you about that?
That's correct, yeah. Apparently, the Florida Department of Transportation has a program. The family just assumed that PennDOT had one as well. We found out that PennDOT didn't have a program and started our own. To my knowledge, nobody else in the county's picked it up yet, although we would hope people would.
Yeah.
It means a lot to the families.
Yeah. Well, you usually, you, you know, it's terrible. You see these accidents, and you see the signs people put up and the teddy bears and whatever you have, you know, and this is something that's more permanent that replaces that, you know, the marker, which is really nice. Yeah, it's surprising that it's not a nationwide thing, you know, but-
Yeah, I agree. But I think it, it was a good thing for us to take leadership in.
Right.
You know, we try to educate the public as much as we can. We try to deal with enforcement and engineering issues, anything we can do to, to make people safer on the roads. I think seeing that sign hopefully causes people to reflect that somebody was lost there and maybe get them to slow down.
Anything else?
Uh, I'll email you if it comes to me.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to manager comment. Mr. Tequita, that's you.
Just two small items. The Falls Township 2022 sweeping schedule's been posted. On the dates which your street is scheduled to be cleaned, please do not park your vehicles on the street between the hours of 7:00 a.m. through 5:00 p.m. If the street sweeper does not arrive on the scheduled days, please keep your vehicles off the street during the above-mentioned hours until the sweeper cleans your street. This schedule will be posted on social media as well as the website. One other item, the Bucks County Department of Health will be starting its 2022 mosquito control program, where they'll investigate and take corrective measures to control mosquito populations on township property. Additional information on this project, or this program, will be posted on social media as well as the website.
All right.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Tequita. Takes us to board comment. Mrs. Mullin?
I don't have any comment. Thank you.
Mr. Borowski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No thank you.
The only thing I'm gonna mention, you know, I mentioned the parades, and for the first time, I think, in at least two years, if not more, Saturday, the 12th, is the St. Patrick's Day Parade returning to Bucks County, the only one in the county. So, mark your calendars, it's always a big event. All of the restaurants and watering holes in Falls Township will be having festivities. And that's all I have tonight. So, with that, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Some of them.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.